We are being called to order, and I'd like to welcome you all to the Thursday, April 28, 2016 Board of Directors Meeting for the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. If you'll all please rise and join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could remain standing, Vice President Perry?
Dear God, we ask you for your guiding hand to lead us through this meeting tonight and help us accomplish the task ahead of us for the citizens of our district. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you like to give us the roll call?
Director James Fermanan.
President.
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Robert Uten.
Here.
Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Scott, any ceremonial matters?
No, Mr. President.
Any late communications?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public comments, this is the time and place that members of the public are allowed to speak before the Board on items that are not listed on the agenda. We'll have three minutes to speak. We have one. Mr. Ridge, would you like to speak to the -- we need you up here, Greg, because we record you.
Oh, I see. Good evening, Board. My name is Greg Ridge, Costa Mesa resident, but tonight I'm actually representing the Orange County League of Conservation Voters. I served on that board, I've been on that board for about four or five years now. I'd like to pass these out real quick so that everybody has them while I'm talking.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
The Orange County League of Conservation Voters, we work in conjunction with the Sierra Club of California. We actually go out and interview city council members or candidates throughout the entire county. We talk about environmental issues, environmental awareness, we try to raise awareness and just ask them where they stand on certain positions, and then we endorse for races. We also do that on special districts because a lot of cities, as you know, have different special districts to handle their sanitation and their water, which are addressed with environmental issues. Reason I'm here today is at the last board meeting that we had, I mentioned your bio-waste program that you're doing. It actually was raised a few eyebrows and some big wide eyes and smiles. There was one of our -- our President, Michael Welborn, was familiar with it, and he was extremely excited about it. They would like to know more about it. It very well could be that next year you might be up for an award. We like to actually honor districts that kind of are leading the way in Orange County on environmental issues. And so anyhow, I wanted to come here tonight and let you know that our awards dinner is going to be next week, next Friday, on May 6. It was kind of late. Our cutoff time, if you wanted to actually attend the dinner and meet a lot of the people, is tomorrow is the RSVP cutoff. But I wanted to come in here tonight and formally invite all of you, if you'd like to attend, to the awards dinner and just kind of meet the people who are behind it. I think it's really kind of helpful to see where we're going in the county. I think our county has -- we've grown so fast, so quickly, and absorbed so much impact on the county that sometimes we're at this point right now where there's a lot of catching up to do on things that we've lost and how to deal with a lot of the problems that we're dealing with. And you guys know that, being on the sand board. How do you deal with the sewer infrastructure that you're going to have to deal with, the massive amount of population growth? And so we, as an organization, work together with a lot of other groups to try to, you know, build a network that you have experts and people that you can talk to, and you get support for the people who need to be elected in the position so we can move environmental issues through in Orange County. So that's all I came here for tonight, and I just wanted to let you know. I think that my time's up.
Questions? No, go ahead.
If we wanted to have someone attend, is it too late?
Oh, no, no, no. Tomorrow is the cutoff time, you know, for the RSVP, but the cost is $85 per person. After the 29th, it would be an additional 15 bucks per person, which is, you know, it just gets a little, you know, high. It's at the University Club, you know, which is, I don't know if anybody's been there, it's a really nice club on the CI. It's under the trees, you know, there's a bar, there's a presentation, you can see some of the award people. We're calling actually this year the Award of the Year of the Initiatives because we not only have Costa Mesa First with the Smart Growth Initiative, we also have Dana Point, Danning Ranch is on there, and also the Voice of OC for environmental journalism. So, you know, one year we gave it to South County Irvine Ranch, we did a South County Water Director one year got one, you know, just because of their ge-sell plant that they're doing down there in Doheen. So we try to spread it out and do different things every year. Businesses sometimes will receive it. We're looking to try to get more into special districts and honor that so that you guys know that we're out there, and not only we're out there, we're watching. And that's the important thing, you know. We're going to applaud you when you deserve the applause, you know, and that's what we want to make sure that you get the recognition. It gives you a lot of opportunity to be able to share that, you know, news, hey, we recently took up an environmental award from the county environmental, leading environmentalists.
Greg, if you ever have a desire, your group has a desire, to go on a tour of the groundwater refinishment at Orange County Sand District, it's a very interesting.
Oh, yeah. Our water people, we have on the board Michael Welborn, he's actually a water expert. He deals with a lot of the stuff that, you know, up in Sacramento, and we're extremely aware of.
You know, we won Stockholm Water Award.
Oh, yeah.
Back in '08. Also, they're going to be conducting tours of the organic facility out there.
That's what we're really, that's what we really liked, how you're leading away, especially like a lot of people are like Costa Mesa, you know, I got a lot of look, and everybody was like, yeah, Costa Mesa. And so, you know, we're really, you know, I'm proud of the fact that I'm a Costa Mesa resident, and I want to share your accomplishments with others, and they were very pleased to hear it, so.
Greg, while you're here, Scott, is that open now? Does it start up yet?
Uh, no, it'll be in June.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, Jeff West is giving me that, you know, give him an award, and it's like, hey, look, you know, just because you're getting a little problem down there, it doesn't mean that these guys aren't doing the right thing on the ground, you know. So maybe it's not, it's not quite up to fire right now, but we're, you know, we're ahead of the curve on this, so anyhow, that's all I had to tell you guys.
Good.
So thank you all.
Thank you, makes sure to invite.
We're going to have tours for a little bit.
Yeah.
We're going to provide transportation.
We'll make sure you guys.
So we'll make sure you guys know that'd be really good.
I'll send it out. And so I gotta go drop off some Trump signs, and I'll see you guys all later.
Stay out of the traffic.
Trump signs.
There's right there.
Hey Greg, your Trump signs are under the chairs.
Thanks for coming, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. This is something we would have to do on our own, right? This isn't something the district would.
Oh, something, I'm not sure.
If you wanted to bring it up as an on-agenda item, because we need obviously Sister Rose, and if there's a need to take immediate action, we could make findings for that if you want to.
Can we do that now?
Yeah, it should be a motion to consider non-agenda item.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries five to zero.
Then you'd want to consider what was before you and that there was an opportunity to attend a meeting in which you were possibly going to be honored or recognized or considered, and it only came to your attention tonight.
Tonight.
And there's no, there's no other, it does require immediate action because there's only one opportunity to go.
I think it's not, we wouldn't be honored if we were to just, we would be watching, watching what other people are receiving.
I got the feeling that there're going to be people there that want to hear our story or hear.
No, I don't think so.
No?
I didn't take that, I thought he was, the main thing is.
These people?
To honor these people.
His board is interested in hearing our story.
But not, that's not what this dinner would do then.
No.
Because that would be the only reason I would think to want to go is for him to be able to speak about the issues. Okay.
I think maybe we'd do that at a later time.
Yeah.
Once we're up and rolling.
They're considering these people, so.
They're honoring.
He presented this because I said that, because he said if he wanted to go, you had to put it in by tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, they will want to go.
I'm not sure that date, that's Friday, Friday.
That's tomorrow.
No, it's next Friday.
Next Friday.
Next Friday.
I would go, but I'm not going to spend my $85,000, my dollars to go.
Josh, lack of a motion again?
What is the last minute?
Yeah, very much. Okay, anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Not seeing anyone, we'll close that portion of the meeting and go to the consent calendar.
Move for closing.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes five to zero. No public hearings this evening, so Scott, we'll go to item nine under item, we'll go to sub-item nine under section 10.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is art wraps for the wastewater pump station control panels. Couple of weeks ago, at the April study session, board study session, the board heard us a presentation from staff and also from the ad hoc committee that was created by the board to look at certain control panels and we can apply the art wraps, which we already have one over on Harbor and Eldon. And on the base of the recommendation of the ad hoc committee, the committee suggested eight stations, with their enclosure three, have art wrap, which is in your attachment in your staff report. And then the committee recommends that the art wrap will apply to the significant locations, just over significant locations to that station, and you can see that in your attachment. The board accepted the recommendation and directed staff to bring this back for tonight's meeting so the board can approve appropriate $7300 from the wastewater agency fund to support the program. The program will actually kick off in the fall because right now it's the end of the school year, and the board recommended that we get Vanguard University and Orange Coast College units involved and encourage them to submit some artwork. Now that school is coming to the end, the program will be kicked off in the fall, beginning of the school year.
I think also it's going to be like a two-year project this year.
Yes, yes.
Not one year, but two years.
Correct.
If the money was allocated, that would be over a two-year period.
Correct.
And I think that the pictures that you see in here are just some samples, that may not be what we put on.
Correct.
Some samples.
Those are the ones I think that Tish from the Historical Society provided.
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we allocate $7300 out of a contingency fund to support this art wraps project.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries five to zero. Looking forward to, yeah, coming over here tonight, I saw the one at Estancia. Ours are going to be a lot better.
Yeah, but theirs is right out there.
It's right out in front is the thing, you're right. Okay, item 10.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is an extension agreement to employee lending agreement with the Orange County Conservation District. Last year, we entered an agreement with OCSD, we have Rudy Devilla, they're one of the engineers, the service alternative engineer. That agreement has expired, and so we need to enter, actually a new agreement. Unfortunately, the agreement wasn't ready at the time the agenda was closed last Friday. The city council and our district council are reviewing and commenting on the agreement. That agreement hasn't finalized, it is before you tonight. I also have a copy for the public, has been approved by their district council, by our district council. The only difference is that now it's a one-year agreement, but now we have an option to extend for three additional one years. And also, if it's the board's approval, I would sign with your approval, with your approval, then I would sign the agreement on behalf of the district, and the city will present this agreement to their board and then.
May board me. Every time we have an employee, do we have to do a new agreement, or does this cover everybody that we might?
No, it's just going to agree.
Okay.
So that's why in the attachment, it was a resolution, you designate him as the alternative engineer.
Yeah.
So if we're going to designate someone else, you have to help another resolution.
But we use the same kind of agreement when we had, oh, her name just left my book.
Denise.
Denise.
It varies a little. Yeah, it varies a little. It's a little different though because the alternative engineer is close to being like an officer, where he has authority to sign plans.
Okay.
And so, as opposed to somebody just giving you advice.
Okay.
Scott, how much time, how many times did we use him, or how much time do we use him?
A lot recently because of our district engineer there has been very busy.
Yeah.
So we probably have three plans waiting right now for this agreement to be signed over there, and two more to go.
And do you have any idea how much time it takes him to do that, or?
It kind of varies on the plans themselves, on what he's reviewing. I think it's averaging an hour-ish for each plan, that's just the standard. We haven't, they don't bill that frequently, so we haven't gotten a lot of billings from them, so we're not extra sure, you know, how many total he's reviewed, I can look and see how many we've sent.
There's not a question.
Does he come here to review plans?
No. We've got that somewhere, we've got that as a map.
Rob, the other twelve were with him and with the other plans?
Well, we also like to have, if it's necessary, just to go over policies and all, but we also try to have some separation there, so I don't really call them up and start discussing unless there's a special situation.
Just a minor question. We FedEx Two Fountain Valley and they FedEx back? Would it make more sense to have someone drive them over and bring?
You know, it's, I think it's less than $20 to FedEx it there, and there's no time when it'll be done. So if we had a lot of plans, we would, but the staff time to leave and then not be able to serve the customers.
That makes sense. If, like, if it was a big stack of stuff, I can understand.
I heard it's like an act of God to actually get on their campus.
Oh, it's tough.
Yeah. I can give you my VIP.
Maybe that's why we couldn't get in?
No, I was thinking you could take them over, of course.
Jim or I.
I was going to propose that we look into some kind of drone system. Everybody else?
We just go to the front gate and get them.
Why can't we?
There's money in the budget for that.
For drones?
Well, they have pictures on the wall.
They have wanted pictures.
Yeah.
The panty on.
Make motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Okay, motion, and a second, any other discussion on it? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries five to zero.
Melanie, can I get some help with this thing?
Yeah, mine's heavy. It's way with me.
Just push the right buttons.
Apparently, I don't know which button to push, I've just gotten a lot in here with them. He didn't take this thing, throw it away, it never worked. Anyway, check it out next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move to budget review, Scott? Is that Wendy?
Thank you, Wendy, over to the court.
Let me borrow mine for a second. Hi. The quarterly budget, this is the third quarter, so we're getting a little further into the year, we can kind of see what's happening. This is, you know, the first two-year budget. So we're a little more on track than we were over the past two budget cycles. But I want to bring to the board's attention that we have had some significant changes since we adopted the budget in last July. The first thing is that in January, we had the senior management analyst resign, and so we kind of reorganized our staffing, and we're, we didn't refill that position, and our part-time account clerk was promoted to our administrative assistant position, full-time. So we're saving a little bit in salaries, but we're still projecting to be on task because the people were given promotions and money associated with that, so that's why we're projecting to be on budget still, just with the small savings and part-time. In the trash fund, we're only projecting $100,000 savings in the organics line item budget. It will probably be substantially more than that, but we'd like, again, to be conservative. You can see that we've charted out for you the quarterly tonnage amounts. So our December quarter was higher than our March quarter on average, but again, when the new facility goes online and we start paying the higher prices, we should expend more of the budget. So we still don't have a great idea, but we're, we projected at least $100,000 in savings there. And then in the wastewater fund, we're on track with our budgeting, to be on budget at the end of the year. It's really working out well with having the additional cleaning crew. They're, you know, cleaning more, and we're, the contractor accounts are recognizing the savings that we didn't budget. So that's kind of cool, to have something work out the way we anticipated it. Our capital outlay is, at this time, was over because we hadn't had the board appropriate the money for the new building, but we haven't done the deposit, so that has since been corrected in April, so you'll see that in the next quarterly. And then the last thing I would like to point out is in the capital improvement project budget, that the district engineer came up with some savings in three different projects, and we were able to move that money to the new grade five, and they have started working on some of the grade fives they found in the first phase of the CCTVs. So overall, we're, vegetarian-wise, we're doing, we're doing good. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Wendy? Somebody?
Paris is going to open for us in June, is that correct? They were going to have a startup in April, how did the startup go?
It's, my understanding, they were putting water in the system, and according to Mike Siller, it takes weeks for it to.
Oh, so, because he told us that last week, right? I thought it was like a couple-day process.
No, I was surprised how long it takes too, but yeah.
Is that why it's out, don't you?
It'll take forever if they just put water in, you've got to seed it with something besides water.
Yeah, well, it's just not what, if you put the switch on and it turns on.
I think, I think they are, and he told us it was just something else, I didn't know it took so long.
Yeah, I know.
What kind of, I think I've asked this question before, and I forgot what you said, but what kind of impact is it going to be when that program kicks in? I mean, based on the tonnage that we've experienced here lately?
What tonnage did you experience? What tonnage did you estimate for the year, do you remember, Wendy?
Um, I do.
We budgeted $600,000 for it, right?
Yeah, I want to say $42,000, does that sound, I don't know, that would be our total tonnage, right?
I think we budgeted like $600,000 on the organics, and remember, we were anticipating we'd go in a deficit, that's always, and we anticipate that, so we just, because the age is not on right now, not working, definitely don't have a deficit.
Right.
Because even though our food craft is not going to landfills, they're just don't taking it out, they're taking it out to Victorville, but they're charging us the old rate.
I think what we did was, our total tonnage projection was 42,000, and these are coming in at 600, and we, I think we took, we were negotiating, you wanted 20, I wanted 10, and I think we ended up with 15% of our total tonnage being deferred from the landfills to the, so maybe like 5,000 tons? Then we're at 8, 1.8.
We're about six and a half on average.
Yeah.
About 1012 is 36.
Yeah, so even if we did 10%, we're conservative at 10%, we're still not going to make it.
So we're a third, we're a third of what we estimated.
So maybe, you know, depending on if the program grows during the summer months, then we might see half the budget spent.
It will be negative by the end of the year.
No.
Okay, by next, we will make it negative.
Depends on how conservative Wendy's budget. Which is tend to be.
That's a good thing, Bob, that's a good thing. Okay, so this is receiving file. Any other questions for Wendy? Thank you, very much. Item 12, the strategic plan, what's that?
Yes, the thing, Mr. President, this again, just for receiving files, your quarterly update on where progressing to achieve the goals in the strategic plan. A few goals, notable goals I wanted to bring to attention since the last, since the second quarter report. I want to mention goal 1.1, the manhole covered maintenance program. You know, before, later tonight, District Engineer Rob Hamers is going to be presenting to you the sentence of improvements for this project, and so this goal, we are leaving this goal as complete because all the grade five manholes are now repaired. Also, I want to mention to you goal number 5.1, develop a future plan for operation facilities adequacy, that's basically HSG, we all know progress status on that one. So we're going to find that, that's goal as complete. And then under finance, the finance goal, there's 7.2, develop a long-term CIP, which that was presented to you at a study session on March 8, a five-year plan on a CIP, so if that goal is complete. The last one I want to mention is 7.7, create a property report and upload document on district's website, and this is what we call a PAFR, and I want to give kudos to Wendy Davis for completing the PAFR. This is one of my, one of my signatures I'm really completing. The PAFR, you don't see special districts doing PAFRs, in fact, I think we just, we're one or a few ones in California that have the PAFR. And basically what that is, it's a shorter version of the CAFR, the Copper into Annual Finance Report, it makes it easier for the public to understand what we spend. And so I want to give a big thanks to Wendy Davis for working on that and doing a really great job on that PAFR that's now on our website, and we actually submitted that for an award at the PFA, so hopefully it's a freedom of protest. So since the second quarter, we've got, we've completed four additional goals in the second quarter.
Question? Yeah, good job. Make good job to our finance manager. Acronyms drive me crazy, but that's okay.
What is the acronym you were just using?
CAFR.
The CAFR?
Oh, CAFR?
Propagated Annual Finance Report.
I know the CAFR is.
There's only one acronym that I associate with. HSG. It's my favorite one. Oh, you want to know what it means?
Yeah.
High school grad. Sorry. Okay, anything else on that?
No, no.
All right, item 13, City Newport Beach Encroachment Agreement?
Yes, Mr. President, this is kind of like the cart in front of the horse. This is regarding our generator over at the 23rd Street Pump Station. Typically, you want the encroachment agreement signed first, but Newport Beach was kind dragging the feet, and we didn't want to.
Really?
And so here we are, four years later, we finally got the generator, it's in there, it's in the enclosure, it's hooked up, it's going to be fired up next week, and we'll be fully operational, not like the four years. Big thanks to Rob Hamers for getting this through. It was, it was, it was very challenging to deal with City Newport Beach, but one of the conditions is that we signed this approach agreement, it has been reviewed by district council, and it is ready for your approval.
How did they react when we told them we were done?
They really didn't know much they could, basically, oh, let's get this agreement done.
Move approval.
Motion a second. Any other discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries five to zero. Good job. Okay. Let's go to our engineers report, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. Just two quick pictures, to show you what we're doing. One picture is some 35-year-old valves at the Eldon Pump Station, so you can see that there is a necessity to replace those, so that's our largest pump station. And this is that 23rd generator that General Manager Scott was just referring to, that's all I have.
What's the, what's the orange fence in the, is that ours, the orange fence?
No, that's, well, there's actually.
Are they doing some construction this way?
Yeah, that's ours. Unfortunately, the property owner, who just purchased the house, took out all the landscape, trees, everything, you wouldn't have seen our generator enclosure if all that landscaping hadn't been taken out.
Really?
So unfortunately, it looks a little bare there, so we have some strategy to put some landscaping back in. Unfortunately, there's no water, they don't water the parkway, so we have to find things that will grow.
Drive tolerant type stuff, you mean?
Yes. So a lot of activity is going on.
Are we replacing those valves, or we already have replacements?
Those are the old ones. This is Project 202 that will start in mid-May, and those are, that's the main reason of the project, were those old valves, and we're also replacing the valves inside the. the pump station.
We, we don't do that work ourselves.
We go out to bed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's very hard specialty work.
Yes, one, one more question. Do we exercise those valves periodically or not?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, we need to do that religiously, or else they freeze.
Right.
And unfortunately, one of those valves is frozen, and that's some other valves out there, and they're absolutely correct.
Do, do we have a set assignment for our workers to do that, to go to, around all the valves and exercising them or not?
That is done by Steve Kano, our maintenance supervisor, and yes, they have a schedule that they, now that we have a dedicated pump station crew, that gets done correctly now.
I didn't, yeah, we never talked about that before.
It's, it's a, a very good point. You can't, you can't overemphasize the importance of exercising valves. They start freezing right away.
And keeping records if we learn.
Yeah, yeah. Very good, Alex.
Yeah, we had records, but...
Very good.
Uh, Rob, this was, the project was in two phases. Is this the second phase?
Of Eldon.
Of Eldon, yeah.
Yes, if you recall, we, we slip lined the forest main from Irvine that goes to Eldon, then we installed the backup pump in a building, and we had to move the golf course fence.
Yeah.
And this is actually the last phase of updating all the piping.
The last work.
Right.
Yeah, looking.
Any, any of the pushback, or not pushback, but remember the golf course that talked about moving some stuff around? We haven't heard any more on that. They've pretty much settled down and they're not gonna change anything over?
The golf course is, they have requested permission to construct a new sewer lateral on the downhill side on Santa Ana Avenue.
Really?
That comes up. There's a sewer lateral there now that serves the maintenance area, and they've requested a new lateral there since they have a new layout. I haven't seen the plans yet, but I've had discussions with the engineer, and there are some improvements going on. I'm not exactly aware of what it is yet, but I will see it shortly.
Since they're part of Newport Beach, right?
San Ana Country Club?
No, you're talking about San Ana, I thought you were talking about...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're talking about the Little Course? I was talking about the Little Course. Yeah.
Yeah, they're putting a couple of million bucks in that airport for the course.
The Little Course?
Yeah.
Are they really?
You know who it is? Buck Johns.
No kidding.
Oh, he wants, that's the one that is airplaneing around like...
Santa Ana's under construction too. Santa Ana technical.
Yeah, I, I saw that.
Final comments are that the Indus Re line will start at the beginning of May. It's already preliminary work is complete. The Eldon valves will start at May fifteenth, and then the harbor forest main will start June first.
June first.
And then, right behind that, we're going to put a new forest main at South Coast Plaza.
Have they, have you got an agreement with them to do that?
I'm sorry.
Is that, are they, are they, are they in agreement with?
You're referring to...
Has an alternative been selected for that, the South Coast Plaza one?
Yes. We're gonna...
Cause I know, they were...
Happy to discuss that.
Everything's good with the city as far as harbor?
So far, yes.
I mean, they're obviously, after our meeting, fully aware of what's going on, so...
We're gonna start the campaign at the beginning of May for letting the public know that we're gonna be out there.
And then the city signs that they have, this run is coming up on Sunday?
I'm hoping so.
There seems to be more of those signs than the city owns. Okay, anything else, Rob?
That's it, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mark?
Oh, hang on.
Oh, I forgot sixteen, Rob, I'm so sorry.
Fifteen, there's nothing to report. Sixteen is standard procedure for acceptance of improvements. Scott already mentioned this project was complete, that's phase two, so we've corrected our deficiencies that are potential car damages and other problems.
Move it.
Motion second, any other discussion on it? All those in favor?
All right.
All right, motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the, just look there.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
We're not, oh, not doing any more manholes, just we just did the grade five, so we did grade four, so...
We're, what we need to do is be diligent with our field crew and have them notify us when these get bad. For instance, if they go out and open a manhole and see there's a problem down there, they tell me, I put it in those records, and then when there's a project, then when we get enough, we do a project. If these start to deteriorate again, we have to get information from our field crew so that we know when they're getting bad and not let them get as far bad as they got before. So we just need to stay on top of it.
I have an engineering question. This is kind of off topic, but today I was at Fairview and Baker Street going east on, on Baker, and the gas company had closed down the interse, or one lane of the intersection. And they were jackhammering straight down, obviously, but they weren't jackhammering a big hole, they were jackhammering a hole about fifty cent piece size.
Okay.
And then they were taking a probe or a stick or something, stick, like it seemed, were they like testing to see if there were other lines or something into there, do you think?
They could have been doing that, yes. They could have been, uh, potholing to find the depth of something, or they could have been, uh, testing the soil, like a soils test, like cor, coring.
Coring it?
Take a, a boring sample, which is a piece, a cylinder of dirt to, uh, test the dirt prior to a project. Could be a few reasons.
And then, of course, my, my insurance instincts rose up because there were three guys, and they had four cones. One guy jackhammering, one guy over at the truck, and one guy over here. And I'm thinking, I know how people drive down Ba, on Fairview, and I thought, oh, he had his orange vest, you saw it?
I saw it too, yeah.
And I thought, they need, you know, someone there to, to block the...
I thought they were gonna get hit myself.
I, though, I, there was one car that I thought was gonna get the kid.
They, they really should use their truck as...
They had the truck in front of them.
Yeah, they had the truck, yeah.
Instead of, yeah, instead of behind them.
Yeah.
Cause people are driving this way, but the truck's in front.
Right, they should actually work on the, be shielded by the truck, is what they should do.
I'm sure we do that.
Yes, we do.
I didn't know about the gas company. I, it looks like a private enterprise, I, cause I didn't see the gas company.
There was a gas company, okay. Okay. Anything else, Rob?
That's it, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, Mark, now you're up.
Okay, Mr. President, board members, first item is, uh, first step in your, uh, financing of the purchase of the new building using, um, lease purchase financing. And, uh, at your special meeting of April eighteenth, you approved the total cost of the building, maximum cost of five million forty-three thousand, and you approved, uh, a funding concept, uh, of that using the proceeds from the sale of this building, fixture fees, and then the balance being, uh, lease purchase financing. Uh, and that's about three point two million at this point. Um, the item before you is a resolution that, uh, adopts your intent to, uh, move forward with the lease purchase financing. Uh, it, uh, delegates, uh, certain functions to the president, to the general manager, uh, or to any, um, uh, other designee that you may have, uh, so that, and the reason for that is so that we don't have to come back to the board every time we have docs that need to be signed. You're, you're delegating that authority to, uh, to those individuals to sign docs on your behalf. The resolution that's before you is in the, uh, that very initial amount that we had gotten our quote from, uh, from the C S D A Finance Corp. of four million dollars, and that's, that now becomes your absolute maximum, uh, if you choose to adopt this resolution tonight. Uh, when the financing actually takes place, because we'll be able to use, uh, other sources of funds, and those other sources of funds may hopefully grow between now and the time we actually need to finalize that dollar amount, maybe the actual lease purchase financing amount would be less than three point, uh, uh, two million. But, uh, this is the first step. What will happen after this, if you adopt this, is we will transmit it to the C S D A Finance Corp. Uh, they will start the process of creating the documents. There will be a, a period that, uh, we will need to come up with the actual firm amount that we're going to finance, and we'll work with, um, management, uh, here on, uh, finalizing that. Once that final amount is determined, they'll send us docs. The docs will go to Alan for his review and creation of an opinion, uh, that everything is, uh, is in order. And, um, and then at that point, then the, uh, the financing can, uh, be finalized so we can get our funds. I did talk to, um, C S D A Finance Corp., uh, today as far as timing on when they would be able to fund this, and they said that, um, uh, if we were to start this process tomorrow or, or Monday at the latest, that we would, they would be able to fund everything no later than June thirty, which would be right in line with, um, uh, closing of the build, or the closing of the other escrow, and so the timing is, is good.
Okay.
So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have on, uh, this process.
I'd like to make that motion.
Well, I have this question. When does the seller know that, did we agree on that date for closing? Is that the date we agreed on?
Yeah, the, the actual official close is, uh, May twenty eighth. Okay, so, so I forget, because, uh, the seller had one, another, um, one more option to extend for another thirty days, he's not gonna, he's not gonna, um, extend that, so it's gonna be official on May, I think twenty seventh or twenty eighth, uh, it'll be closed on the building.
How, how do we handle that if we don't get funded by C S D A Financial?
There, there's adequate cash available to be able to do that.
Yes, I thought.
There's, yeah, there's plenty of cash. The, the problem I have is that, um, I don't want our financial statements to show that we, um, exceeded our net position in the sewer fund, because we don't get the cash back until July first.
Yeah.
So at June thirtieth, we'll have a negative position, so I'm hoping that it does go smoothly and we can complete it and at least get the, the major funding back into the fund, so we're not negative in the fund.
You, you were looking for a date. Twenty seventh of May is a Friday? Is that...
So it's gotta be twenty sixth.
Oh, Thursday the twenty sixth?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah, ask one more question.
Okay.
Now, if it's the twenty sixth, do they, is that gonna meet the timetable for him? Because, is that when S W's gonna close?
Mm-hmm.
So we have to have the money in there tires at that time? Uh, then we just gotta, I don't know, when we cut the check, uh...
It's gonna depend on...
Or they, they usually don't wire it, not there?
We're not allowed to wire, the way our stuff is set up, so we would literally have to write a check.
Right, you know, how long does escrow take to close, uh, deal like this?
On the, on this financing?
No, I mean, we're not gonna get our money in time probably, but...
Correct.
How long do, when do we have to put the money in to have it closed on time?
On you, the funds would have to be in, uh, in enough time, especially if we're gonna cut a check, in enough time to be able to, and we'll talk about that, because we may have the ability to wire by then, but, um, we will, uh, we, uh, usually the funds have to be good for, uh, a day or so, they just have to be good funds. They can't be, the check can't take it down and close the same day, the funds all have to, uh, clear and be to the funds.
A day or two or something?
I know, it's usually for that large of an amount, it's gonna be more than a day or two.
Probably five business.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm getting at, because we have to have the money from them. If the escrow people are closed.
They'll give, yeah, they'll give us a portion of it as good collective funds, and then the remaining portion will, uh, but...
How does all this coincide with the part that where we're buying, said they want an extension of time?
They said that they don't want it.
They don't want it.
But they don't now?
It's gonna, it's gonna close on, in May, in the May, yeah, they don't want it.
Oh, they don't now?
Yeah, they don't know.
That's what I wanted.
This is, this is the seller, I mean, they don't wanna extend it from the month.
They don't want to come in for money.
So we have to have the money in in May.
No.
Which we have.
Yeah.
And then, if we use the finance corp, that we replenish the funds.
Well, you could lend us in a couple, per couple, per, per couple, one month.
Couple of days, could you?
Couple hundred thousand, yeah.
What's your interest?
It's, it's a Navy deal.
Let the record reflect that this is all in jest, I hope. Early...
I'd like to move the resolution number twenty sixteen dash eight immediately.
Motion in a second. Do we have any other discussion on it? Mark, anything else?
No, nothing else.
Wendy? All those in favor?
All right.
Now, motion carries five to zero. Jesus, cross the bridge.
No turning back now.
No turning back now.
Wow.
Um, just a quick question. We did eight eighty, what's eight eighty-one? Is that later?
Uh, I, I thought that was, um, district council, if I got, on the, we're, we're gonna have a, a future, um, agenda, it's not tonight, I thought it was gonna be, uh, add-on tonight.
So this is just preliminary, okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll present it in this month.
Okay. Uh, item eighteen, Mark?
Okay, Mr. President, board members, this is your quarterly pullout of the investment report for, uh, discussion. As of March thirty-one, the portfolio was earning one point one six seven percent, and our duration was, uh, two point three five years. Uh, we have, um, just under thirty percent of the portfolio is maturing within, um, uh, in less than a year, and your requirement there is that, um, uh, at least twenty percent of the portfolio mature within, um, uh, within one year. During the month of March, we had, um, uh, one negotiable C D that matured. Uh, it was a one-year C D earning, uh, one-half of one percent. We also had two Freddie Max's that were called. Uh, one was a four-year Freddie Mac, one was a five-year Freddie Mac, uh, they were earning one point eight, one point seven five percent. Um, we had those for a short period, each one, three months and six months on both of those. Uh, we did replace all of those, uh, most all of those investments with, um, uh, two negotiable CDs that we purchased, uh, both two-year CDs at one percent and one point oh five percent, and we also reinvested in, uh, two Freddie Max's, one three-year Freddie Mac, one five-year Freddie Mac, um, at one point four, one point, um, uh, six percent. Uh, both of those, um, do have call features on them, uh, at a, at the two-year mark and the three-year mark, and it's just a one-time call. Uh, reality is they'll probably get called, but if we make it past that call date, then it will be, um, we'll have that security for the balance of the term of the, um, of the investment.
Okay.
Uh, that's really it for this, uh, for this month. Oh, I do want to, uh, talk about the, um, um, the wire, uh, transfer since it came up a little bit, but also about Cal Trust. You know, we've, we've been working on getting, um, a, a deposit in with, uh, Cal Trust, and Cal Trust only accepts funds via wire, and, um, we, um, six, eight months ago, when our banking, um, software had changed, uh, all of our wire capabilities were no longer , uh, present. So, we had tried to initiate a wire, Bank of America had said, no, sorry, you can't do that, and so we can't put any money in Cal Trust yet until we get wires set back up. So, uh, we've been working with Bank of America, we filled out all the documents to be able to start the wire process. They just got approved by Bank of America today. Uh, so what will happen now is that, um, um, I will initiate some security measures that the bank requires, uh, so that when we do a wire transfer, which is only gonna be to Cal Trust, now maybe, maybe the, the settlement of the, um, of the escrow, we'll have to see.
I sense some resistance, but go ahead.
When we do a wire, they will require, um, uh, two, um, two approvals. Uh, one that I would initiate, uh, the transaction, and then Scott would have to approve the transaction. Uh, he would have access to the banking software. He would also be provided with a token, uh, which is a second factor of authentication so that when the wire, uh, comes through, he would log into the software. He would see that there's a wire there. He would pull out his token, press the button and get an authentication number, enter that authentication number, then the wire would be, would be executed.
Sounds simple.
Goodbye Placentia didn't have that system.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, that's. Yeah, really. Uh, there's a key laundering. There's this word called laundering. Just be careful, okay?
Yeah, so in light of that whole Placentia, and, and they're still investigating to find out what the real cause of, of where the failure happened on those wires, why one person could do everything, um, whether that be a city issue or whether it be a bank issue, that's still all being, uh, hashed out. But, so probably within the next, um, month, all of that will be put together and then we can finally make, finally make a deposit with, um, with Cal Trust. So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have. And, and this is an action item, so you need to prove the, uh, the Treasury report. I'm available for any questions.
Do you think we'll have to gain authorization for other stuff to do this with you?
Uh, the wires?
Yeah.
Uh, no, no, we, we, um, I actually will grant him access to the, the banking software, and I'll order him this token. Uh, but that's, no, there's no, he needs to, uh, have another than that.
Moving forward.
We have a motion to second. Is there any other discuss, discussion on the item? All those in favor?
All right.
Uh, motion carries five to zero. Okay, thank you, Mark. Alan, anything to report?
Not under, attending to what, Mr. President.
Okay. Uh, local meetings, Jim?
Sanitation board meeting was last night. It was very brief. Couple things to note. Uh, one, the honor walk that they have in front of the entry of the building there that they recognize former chairman and, and work, you know, managers. Troy Edgar and Blake Anderson, uh, and who was the gal?
Mary Sue Thompson.
Yeah, Mary Sue Thompson. Were all approved, uh, as recipients or, or have their, uh, you know, name engraved on the brick. So that was kinda neat.
And the ceremony will be the, at 4:00 PM before the, May 26th, before the next quarter.
So they can go into the steering. Four o'clock, then four o'clock, the meeting starts to stick.
And, and I can't, I can't hold the G of Honor. Not yet.
Uh, also, um, found out, uh, an interesting development, and that was, uh, the Eastern Orange County Water District, um, did the deal with, um, um.
Orange Park Haters?
Oh, yeah.
No, no, no.
How, how?
North Tustin?
Yeah, with North Tustin.
Tustin and, you know, Orange Park.
Yeah. I mean, it, at least I, I was thinking that IRWD came on at the end and, and looked like they had a shot at it.
Yeah.
But I guess at LAFCO, they just shot them down.
You're kidding me.
Yeah. The newspaper said IRWD had the bag and all.
Yeah.
Really?
And they just got hammered at the.
It was six to one at LAFCO.
And also the boot, Nick, Nick Carantes, who I think we all know, is going to work for Houston County.
I think that may have been the boot of the year. That, that, definitely helpful.
Yeah.
So, uh.
So Dabbert came in last night. He could hardly walk on the floor. His head was that big around.
I know. Anyway, that was about it. We did, we had, uh, some closed session items that, that were kind of interesting, but I can't really share that with you, so I won't.
Thank you. Very good. Thanks, Jim. Hurt?
We did not have a meeting this month.
Okay. Uh, ISDOC, just a couple of quick things. Going back to the March 30th meeting, uh, I don't think I've reported on anything about that. We're still having a heck of a time getting speakers at our meetings because the person on our executive committee which oversees the speakers just isn't doing his job. Um, it's very disconcerting. But we were able, we had invited, um, Supervisor.
Steele?
No, the gal from South County.
Bartlett?
Bartlett.
Yeah.
She couldn't make it, so she sent her chief of staff, Paul Walters. Uh, that was probably one of the worst presentations I've ever been to at a public meeting. He was, Paul's an interesting guy. He's done a lot of, a lot of stuff, but he's just not a public speaker, right? It was very disappointing. Um, we had a good presentation from Tribuco Water District, but that was, that was very, he's a very, general manager is very enthusiastic. I thought he did a good job.
That was good.
And then we had a presentation from CSDA that I thought was really good, too. Um, I can't remember her name either. It's late in the day.
Bernice.
Bernice did a great job, so.
Is there a real turnout?
No. Part of the, I mean, not, part of the confusion was because we had it at the sanitary district, sanitation district. And I think, I think some people actually went over to Orange, over to the water district and then when I wasn't there, figured there was no meeting. That, that's just my impression. But overall, I, it, it was a, it was a good meeting and, uh, our, we're, we're working on our June 30th speaker right now. Uh, not sure how that's gonna play out. But that's really it for ISDOC.
Are we back at ISDOC?
Oh, just, yeah, thank you, Arlene. There is no ISDOC meeting next Tuesday. It's moved to the 10th because all of the water people are at Aqua Convention. So we always change for the water people.
Okay.
That's at 7:00.
7:30.
Yeah. 17.
May 10th, same day as our study session.
And then we have a study session on 30th.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. This is after.
So is that, it's on May 10?
Yes.
May 10.
ISDOC in the morning.
ISDOC 7:30.
The study sessions, study sessions.
I'm glad I got out of it.
Yeah, you got out of it and elected me president. What, what does that tell you?
I knew where I was in.
Well, you know.
Like, screw this.
We tried to, tried to get through the meetings as quickly as possible because it is 7:30 in the morning after. All right, CSDA, Arlene?
Uh, CSDA course has leg, legislation days coming up at the big day. And it's the 16th through the 18th. And, um, I think it's kind of started straightened out what we'll do. Um, also, we have, um, let's see, there's a reception after. It's actually right behind the, are you going?
No, I'm not gonna make that statement.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, I'm not going. And Gina.
Gina, okay. Well, anyway, uh, at the Hyatt is there, and then right behind it is the reception.
Oh, with the.
Next to the restaurant.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Is it larger than the previous?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Plus you, you can go out on the patio.
On K Street or J Street or K, K Street.
It's a busy, busy place.
And we should have a lot of people.
You should get the President's suite in the Hyatt. I mean, there's plenty of room up there.
We don't pay for it, man, for the CSDA pays for it.
No.
What?
No. This is the one we paid for.
I mean, we pay, we pay?
No, not us, uh, the sanitary district does.
Oh, but you?
Yeah. This, we have to actually, even if, like, we're being on the board, have to pay for, like, the registration day and, uh, the other.
I didn't know that.
The convention.
So we, we have to pay for the, the banquet escrow? Did you already pay for it?
Pretty, pretty registration.
We, we pay for it anyway. We pay our dues.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Now, if, if I was going, STRMA would take, take from me.
We should go there.
So the one thing we need to know, and there's a chapter meeting, too, and I'm not gonna bid with that, so that I'll just be with, uh, us from the dinner after. Because there is, uh, Morlock at 5:30, and the chapter meeting starts at 5:30, so I just totally might not be it.
Okay.
So, um, also, do we have all our, um, our applications in for whatever we want?
We got, we got till July. Yeah, we're working on it, but we, we have to.
So Mike, then, okay. So get down and membership. And then, and then, then we have some others, too. So, and, uh, aside from that, uh, tomorrow, what's it, tomorrow? I mean, it's next, no, it's Friday.
Tomorrow's Friday?
Yeah, but it's off that Friday. So next Saturday is the webinar. Yeah, I'm a webinar. I don't have to fly after. And then after that, then we should have our line thing, and then we have registration days as well. Um, that's about it. Uh, on, actually, if you get onto the, um, the computer, it has all every, all the bills that are happening. It keeps changing. And so I, I didn't bother seeing all the updates, but it keeps changing. But I am on the registration side, and we'll be, either doing support or we're doing oppose or.
I got an email from Chris Palmer yesterday, I think, about contacting Morlock's office about SB 858.
Yeah.
We did, we sent a letter.
We did.
And Chris was just encouraging us to call John's office because he's, John's on that committee or something.
He's on the committee, right. And he was going to be a speaker at legislation day.
Who, Morlock?
Morlock. And then he bowed out. I don't know why, but.
It's a busy time up there in the Capitol.
It's a very busy time.
Endless meetings.
Can I add to what you're saying?
Sure.
Our plan is to go up funds. Is it Monday's day? We're gonna go see Morlock at Harper without anybody else. And then the next day, the conference starts.
Well, Harper's running for office. They're, they're smiling at you.
Well, so it's Morlock. They're both gonna run.
Both Trumps.
Yeah, I think he is.
Harper signs it, Harper's all over Fountain Valley.
Cause he's a senator, so he gets four years.
And then we go to the conference the next day. And then, I don't, I don't know if we're gonna, I don't, are we gonna be attending the?
Um, yeah, we have to.
Yeah, we will. Uh, I mean, Director Shaffer and Gina will be going.
Okay. Yeah. You and I have a business meeting, yes.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, I don't wanna be embarrassed this time, so I haven't said a word about Monday seeing Harper or seeing, you know, uh, Morlock. And I just figured that, you know, being with the group, just gonna take pictures and it's important to them and.
Just goes, on the next day, go see Senator Nwinn, and that'll take care of everything.
Can I ask Scott a question? Are we taking anything with us to Harper? I mean, some, our, our positions on certain.
Yes, Gina's, Gina will bring that with her. She's, she's got a list of our positions of our support and opposition.
Very good. Good job. Thank you, Arlene.
So that's about it.
Uh, STRMA, we have a board meeting next week, so I'll have a better report for you next month. It's been real quiet. So, nothing, nothing else on STRMA. Bob, anything else?
I went to Waco.
So did I.
I went, we all went to Waco.
Yeah. Um, and it was the normal reports from Aqua and, man, I actually was at Orange County Sand District and Rob Hamers gave, or Rob, not Rob Hamer, the other Rob. They both looked the same, tall, good looking.
Rob Hamers is better looking.
Anyway, uh, and then, uh, the whole focus was on legislative update, and it was federal, state and local. Um, and then MWD, one of the important things they said, they'd spent $364 million on turf removal, and that exceeds the governor's, uh, request that the state spend $50 million by about seven times. So they were very aggressive. Um, many, many, many bills, uh, we heard about, are, you know, dealing with the drought at all levels. Um, the drought is basically, I was up in Lake Tahoe and I'd read the San Francisco paper, Longina is coming next year. The, the drought has been a total bust in Southern California, which happens 50% of the time. Northern California is, uh, did get about normal rain.
It snowed there today.
It snowed in Lake Tahoe when I was there.
Did it?
On the way up.
Wow.
Yeah, I was just a cute eye when driving right through.
Pictures, pictures of Lake Folsom, I mean, are unbelievable. It's, they're letting water go, they have.
In fact, they're talking about not having any more, um, fees, you know, in other words, it's slapping your hand and saying, you know.
City of LA announced today they were increasing.
What?
The fee. If, if you're a gross.
Southern California, Northern California is trying like, trying like big babies, you know, to get the state board to, um, let them, let them do anything they want. That's it. That was fun meeting.
Couple, couple things I'll add. Uh, James Peterson talked about the drought. He said that a couple of the highlights, there's $3.3 billion in losses in agriculture because of the drought.
Yeah.
There's 3,000 wells that are low in the Central Valley, and it's affecting the large homeless, it's affecting the homeless population, and it's a huge fire threat. And then, um, the Feinstein bill, she's proposing that a new bill for helping the drought is being introduced in Congress to help drought and rebuild the infrastructure. Um, I'm not sure how that's gone yet, but.
I heard, I heard it didn't go very well in Washington.
Yeah, this is, this is a report. I don't know if it died in Congress or not, but.
I don't know, I've heard.
Then Kathy Cole told us about the bills that we should oppose and the bills that are okay to sponsor. I don't know, did you see those, did I expect?
Um, sometimes, some of those bills might not, um, perturb us, so.
Bottom, or, or straight water bills.
Yeah, those are the water.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And that's it, I just to add on to what Bob said.
I went to the Costa Mesa Community Run. What a good turnout of people.
Incidentally, thank you for reminding, um, who, who does our Facebook?
Gina?
She does a great job. The Facebook, um, and Arlene's picture was in the, on Facebook for the district.
Oh, really?
Yeah, for, yeah, um, that's a really nice addition to our operation. I mean, so many people, I think, I heard on the news today that the average person spends an hour and a half a day on Facebook.
Really?
Well, now, I know my granddaughter spends, probably tips the average for, for a lot of people, but.
I make up from the other end.
Yeah, I'm sure you do. But, uh, it, it's very professional and done, done well, so let her know. So.
And the other thing is I've, I've gone to a couple of schools right now already, and they are so appreciative and so happy over receiving the money and doing the batteries. And I'm telling them, we're gonna do it next year, so start saving now. And they're so excited, and the parents are sitting there, too, you know, and they're just really excited over the whole thing.
Yeah, I'm going to California school next Friday, and they, they real, they're, I think what really gets the kids all jacked up is that big check. They love seeing that big giant check, you know?
Yeah, you can't get over that check. And we take pictures.
We get a lot of good pub out of that. Jimmy?
I was at OCAG, and I forgot, forgot to mention this. They did elect a new chairman, and she's from Anaheim, and I know her very well, and I can't come up with her name, but, um.
From the city council in Anaheim?
Yeah.
Lucille Crane?
No.
Was it the gal that?
Yeah.
Was it the gal with the anti-Trump thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Was it her?
Yeah. I, I've known her for years, and, and we're kind of buds, but, uh. I, I've known her for years and, and we're kind of buds, but, uh...
She was pretty straightforward on the news the other night.
Yeah, no, she is. She'll, and then John Nielsen, uh, was the vice chairman.
Um, Phil Anthony has made some innovations that he wants to, you know, he's the, the ISDOC rep on O C O G and he's kind of wanting to back out. So if any of you have a desire to represent ISDOC on O C O G, we can let Phil know. Phil Anthony, oh, yeah.
I'm surprised he's been such a gung ho at O C O G.
I think he's slipping on some of, I think that last executive director got, that gal kind of got to him, so... Okay, any other, uh, any other meetings? Okay, no old business or new business? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
You know, uh, I was thinking that the, um, insurance program was adopted for, actually it was for my benefit, it allowed me to join the group. You know, we're not using it anymore and, and I, I, I don't see a need, uh, to have it unless, unless it's...
No, none of us do.
Can you, you on agenda? Do we need to go to...
You were asking to play on the May agenda.
Uh, I thought I did, yeah. Okay.
Do you know, there was a time process that we missed one year. We were thinking about taking it out.
Well, that was the enrollment period. We, we got, didn't we get caught in an enrollment period crunch or something?
I thought it was back in our...
Maybe delete it from our...
It's coming to the May agenda.
Okay, sounds good. What, uh, is that gonna be reviewed at the, uh, study session where we're talking about the ad hoc committee?
Yes, the, the policy to be at the ad hoc, uh, ad hoc, uh...
Look at it, uh, I think it's on the twelfth.
Yes.
So we can look at it there specifically and just say, "Hey, I think it's outdated." I was the one that said, "Let's keep it for a while to see if anybody else needs it, so we don't need it anymore."
Yeah, I would, I would encourage you to look into the timing.
I think I'm the only one getting close to Medicare and I got two and a half more years, so...
That's a good idea, Jim.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
Study sessions on the table.
Okay, other, uh, direct, under director comments, I wanna start it off by, um, you're all very aware now that we've received a letter from the President of the Mesa Water Board, Mr. Dwayne, inviting us to, uh, participate in a joint study about consolidation and just wanted to kind of briefly give you some of my thoughts on, on what I think we should do about this for now.
Did we talk about, is that on the agenda?
Well, these are, I'm just making some comments. I'm not asking for any kind of action or anything. I just, I'm gonna give you my thoughts on it, which is okay, right? Um, we need to, or I need to answer Sean. I mean, I need to provide him with some information as to the fact that we got his letter. Um, I, my thought process has been kind of to, you know, ob- obviously acknowledge we got the letter, let him know that we'll take a look at it as a board, if, if there's suggestion. Um, we'll need to take it to a study session. Before we have any, before we have any collaboration with Mesa Water, the five of us and our staff need to talk about this. Um, the May study sessions, we're done, and we're already set with that, so I don't really see us talking about this until maybe the June study session, talking about the alternatives and things. I've asked Scott to get some information together on the process with Laughco and, and everything else, so that we can have a, a discussion in June at the study session about what direction the five of us wanna go. And then maybe, uh, whatever we do, I, I don't really see us doing anything on this until at least August or September. It's just, you know, it's too complicated.
Cause I know the study session that we have prepared is for May, it's gonna be really long, because we're going through all of the policies.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I would say something like that.
Well, I, I...
If you have a study session, we could bring it up as, uh, something to discuss.
So my thought is to, to work with Scott, to come up with a letter and say, "Here's, here's kind of what direction I'm advising my board." If, if you're all okay with that, I'm gonna go ahead and...
You might remind them that, uh, uh, when they go around and do those, uh, or, uh, what do they call it?
M S Rs.
M S R.
That we were, we were, uh, supported a hundred percent the way it's set up now. You might, you might mention that, uh, in case he has a...
Well, I, I, I mean, I think most of us know why we got this letter. I think there's opinions all around for this thing, but I, I, I just don't wanna let, leave it hanging. I would, I would at least like to let Sean know that we're gonna politely take a look at his proposal and then we'll do what we decide to do.
Yeah, I want to know you wore this letter.
No.
You haven't seen the letter?
I haven't seen the letter.
Would you like to see the letter?
I would like to see it.
Can I get a copy, please?
Um, a couple of things about the letter that, and Scott and I had a chance to talk about it. One of the things that disturbs me, and I hadn't thought about it till we talked, Scott, the letter came from the Assistant General Manager.
Slash Secretary.
And it was sent...
Mont Leoni.
No, not Colleen, the other one.
Denise, Garcia, I think.
Denise.
Denise. The letter wasn't sent to Scott or to me. It was sent to Gina.
What? I didn't notice that.
And that's very disturbing to me that, um, I, I, and, and I think a lot of what that does is, you know, if, if I'm an employee of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District and I see something like this before my management sees it, I think I'm gonna be a little uneasy about that. And so I'm gonna let, in the letter, I'm gonna let Mr. Dwayne know that this was handled very poorly.
Not very professionally.
No, so...
Well, also, I question, too, whether they actually had it at the meeting and voted on sending this letter.
I don't know.
It's just direction.
There's no direction.
We should talk about this at the study session.
Yeah.
We don't want to be talking about it.
Well, I, I'm just...
Not on the agenda.
Yeah, I, I don't, we're not gonna do anything, but I just want you to know that I, that's my copy, so let's make, we'll have copy. No, Alani can make copies. It is in the public record, so it's not...
I would, I would say we just wait until you, you know, we talk about it that time and then bring up our thoughts.
So it, I'm okay with going ahead and doing that response to him?
As long as you're doing it on your own, not, not with approval.
Yeah.
I would, I would keep it as brief as possible for...
I, I plan on doing that.
Just a response.
So, I basically wanna let him know, "We have the letter and we're taking it under advisement."
That's all I, that's my recommendation.
Our staff member did share this.
Al, believe me, so...
Thank God she wasn't on vacation.
I have a comment about something else that you're...
Yeah, we're in the comment, director comment.
I was hoping, you know, with Greg Ridge coming in, I think that we should probably[1550.87]